Welcome. This is the Monday, May 20th, 2019, meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals. I'd like to start the meeting by saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight's decision will be published in the Record Journal on Friday, May 24th, 2019. The effective date of your variance will be Friday, May 24th, 2019, the date a certified copy is recorded on the land records. The statutory 15-day appeal period will expire on Sunday, June 9th, 2019. If you commence operations and/or construction during the appeal period, you do so at your own risk. Voting tonight will be Mr. Carmody, Mr. Wolfher, Mrs. Tata, Mr. Rice, and myself. Application 19-011, there's going to be no action requested tonight, that is for 131 Cedar Street, so if anybody's here, that's probably going to be next month. First application, 19-010, variance request from Choate Rosemary Hall for a height of 70 feet to erect four poles to illuminate reconstructed athletic field at 333 Christian Street. Madam Secretary, do we have any correspondence?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Staff comments are, request seeks pole height of 70 feet or maximum 30 feet is permitted to erect four utility poles illuminated reconstructed soccer athletic field at 55 North Elm Street in an R-18 district. Thank you.
Welcome. Please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you, my name is-
Pull the microphone close together.
Sure. My name is Walter Scheffler, I'm the Chief Financial Officer for Choate Rosemary Hall at 333 Christian Street in Wallingford. To my left is Rob Champlin, our project manager from Clark Companies, and I'll let him introduce himself and our other guest.
Good evening, my name is Rob Champlin with Clark Companies. We are designers and builders of outdoor athletic venues in the Northeast. Been at it for about 35 years now, hired by Choate Rosemary to build synthetic turf, or to convert an existing natural grass field to synthetic turf due to the rains that we've been seeing, and the all-weather playability of the synthetic turf. To enhance the synthetic turf field, because it can be used literally 24 hours a day, seven days a week, we've contracted with Musco Lighting to provide sports lighting services. Musco is far and away the leader in the industry, and representing Musco Lighting for us is Mike Mahoney, and he'll do a quick presentation and talk to you about the reason for the variance, the height of the light poles.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, for the record, Michael Mahoney with Musco Sports Lighting, and what we're proposing is a four-pole layout. The four 70-foot poles depicted here, each located basically at the top of the penalty box area, which is the most efficient location for distribution of the light. With a four-pole layout, basically each pole is responsible for lighting one quadrant of the field, so once we establish a safe distance off the field for the pole location, then it just gets into geometry. We know that to light one quarter of this field, the fixture at the top of this pole needs to be approximately 150 feet from that furthest point that it needs to illuminate. We apply a cotangent, because we want that fixture to be aimed down and avoid any off-site impact, we apply a cotangent of 2.145 to get an aiming angle of at least 25 degrees down to the field. And the straight math is a pole height of 69.93 feet, in this case, we round it up to 70, and really do a very efficient job of putting all the light on the field and very little light off the field. What you see here depicted are, in 30-foot increments, horizontal light levels, and I believe the average of those 70 fixtures is 400ths of one foot candle. So as you can see, just a very well-distributed, compact lighting design with all the visual impact on the field itself. For just a bit of reference, the current all-weather field at Choate has 80-foot mounting heights, Lyman Hall has two 70-foot poles and two 80-foot poles, Sheehan has two 80-foot poles and two 90-foot poles, Woodhouse Soccer has four 70-foot poles, so this is a...you all have been very good to Musco over the years, we've lit basically everything at Pragman Park, pretty much everything in town, and we've used these appropriate light levels throughout facilities. Thank you. Thank you. So, a couple of questions. This field is not lit, no?
That's correct.
And this is the field that...it's not the field with the track, so this is the next field up?
Sure, so if you're walking past the track towards, I guess that is the east, if you come up over the ridge line, this is one of the two fields that was built in the early 1980s that sits in sort of that saddle over the ridge, it's protected by wood line from the road and from the cemetery property beyond that.
Okay, and along with that, I know Choate's very respectful to the community, but hours of operation for these lights.
Sure, so, you know, I think Rob very aspirationally talked about the all-weather field being able to be usable just about any time. We actually sort of hesitated whether or not to make the investment to light this field at all, given that our sort of, our bias for use here is really to stay within the footprint of our existing use of the grass field, which is mostly fall sport play, and the reason why we'd like to have the lighting and we think it's an intelligent investment to make upfront is, we'll have the ground open, we'll be running conduit anyway, it is a significant step-up expense, but in thinking about it over sort of a 25 or 35-year time period, it seems worth it to us to be able to extend practices and selected late fall play into the late afternoon, perhaps early evening, but we actually don't see any scope change in how we use the field from today in the new renovated surface. The lighting just gives us a point of flexibility, particularly if we have a fall that's as wet as the last one, or a spring that's as wet as this one, to use the two, what Choate would now have is two artificially-surfaced fields that will stay dry, we can stack up games there. With our own calendar, we just typically don't push anything beyond, you know, early evening hours.
Okay. Thank you very much. Is there anybody got any question? Mr. Rice.
I'm trying to visualize where the fields are. Are these the fields that they use for the twist tournaments?
Yes, they are.
Okay. They've been around for years.
Yeah, this field's about 30 years old.
Right, thank you.
Anybody else got any questions?
Mr. Schowinski. On the application, it states that if the lights cannot be installed at the recommended heights, that the spill and glare from the athletic lights will increase. Can you just tell us why that would be?
So as you lower the pole height, that increases the aiming angle, so instead of having a 25 degrees down to the field, if we then lower the pole height, we still have to get light out to the center of the field, so it just becomes a less sharp angle. So what you're doing is you're exposing that light source, it's on a more flat plane, and so basically you're going to get hit with glare, and it's, these are full cutoff fixtures, so there's, when they're aimed correctly, there is zero uplight, it's a very dark sky-friendly fixture, LED, and so with these appropriate aiming angles, you're really going to get a very sharp cutoff.
Thank you.
Sure. Has anybody else got any questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Mr. Wolfher.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Will the field be used by any other rental people when it's not in operation?
Sure, it's not our intention to actually rent this field, we feel that there's adequate capacity at the existing larger turf field that we installed about 10 years ago, that's actually closer to where our better parking is, and when we looked at the renovation of this field to make it more of an all-weather surface, it was again really within the scope of how we use that surface today, just with a better-drained, you know, more flexible play space, so that really leaves the field the way we use it today, which I could imagine perhaps the twist tournament, but we're not looking at driving any new traffic or new activity to campus with this renovation.
Thank you.
Has anybody else got any further questions? Is there anybody here speak in favor of this application? Does anybody here speak against this application? Hearing none, do you have anything further to add before I close the public hearing?
Thank you very much for hearing us.
Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing and open up for discussion and possible action by the board.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve this height of 70 feet where it's not to exceed 50 feet, and I don't see any problem with this.
Second.
Motion to approve, Mr. Carmody?
Yes.
Mr. Wolfher?
Yes, to approve.
Ms. Tata?
Yes.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Chair, who's that?
Yes, the variance have been approved.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Next application is 19-012, variance request from Wilkins for a side yard of 11.8 feet and building coverage of 16% to construct an addition at 188 Parker Farms Road. Madam Secretary, do we have any correspondence?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have first staff comments. Applicant seeks variances for side yard of 11.82 feet where 1.56 feet exists and 20 feet is required, and building coverage of 16% where 15% maximum is permitted, to construct a garage and sunroom addition to the rear at 188 Parker Farms Road in an R-18 district. Parcel received variance approval in May 2005 for side yard of 2.33 feet to construct an attached two-car garage. Garage was constructed predating A2 survey requirement, and therefore was located less than 18 inches from side property boundary. This office cannot support any expansion of the encroachment into the same side yard setback. Furthermore, the property would be compliant regarding building coverage and a variance request would not be necessary if both existing outbuildings sheds were removed from the parcel. This office cannot identify any hardship associated with these variance requests as compliant options exist. And we also have correspondence dated May 13th, 2019, from Walter Smith. That's all, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Good evening.
Hello.
Please pull the microphone close to you and state your name and address for the record.
My name's Pam Wilkins, I live at 188 Parker Farms Road, I'm the property owner.
Pull the microphone a little closer to you, so we can hear you.
My name is Pam Wilkins, I live at 188 Parker Farms Road, I'm the property owner requesting the variance.
Okay. And I'm Paul Buckley Reynolds, and I made the map from Stonewall Boundaries.
Okay, thank you. Can you explain your application?
Actually, the application initially states that we're looking to put on an addition that would be a sunroom and a garage, one bay garage extension. It's actually for a sunroom and a living space, two rooms, not a room and a garage bay. And what we're looking to do is where, off of our living room where there is an existing patio, to place a sunroom there and the one office space. Our current house is relatively small and we have seven grandchildren.
Okay, in the planning office is saying that the property, the garage is built 18 inches from the side yard.
Right, so if you envision the two-car garage sitting on the property, we're, so you've got the one bay and the second bay, we're building off, we wanted to build off the back, the bay close, farther from the property, so we're going to be 11 to 15 feet from the property line, there would still be a fair spance before, we're not going as close to the property line as the existing second bay of the garage, if I'm making sense.
Yeah, and that 1.56, what is existing currently, they had been granted that variance back in 2005, before the survey requirement was needed.
Well, right, but they were granted a side yard of 2.33 feet, and it's actually 18 inches is what?
Yes, and that's because there were no, you know, adequate surveys that were done in Green Manor, this lot here is part of Green Manor, and it was a split-up subdivision with the property not lines very well, not defined. It was a difficult survey actually to do because of the lack of adequate survey monuments in the area, so they did the best they could in determining how far away that garage was going to be at the time they filled out that application.
Okay, well, the other question is removing the sheds.
Well, there are two existing sheds, one shed is relatively old, and I'm just using it as a potting shed, I have absolutely no issue with getting rid of that one. The other one, which is up at the back of the property, if we got rid of that, I wouldn't have any place to store my lawnmower, my snow blower, my kayak, any wheelbarrow, anything. So that's why I would like to be able to keep one of the sheds.
Okay.
Which does reduce the-
If you were to, if you were to get rid of that second shed though, it would make it easier for us to look at this application, because removing that shed, you wouldn't need the coverage variance.
I understand.
And, you know, as the variances are piled on, we get to look at, is there a possible way that you could do this without asking for the variance, and there absolutely is? So, I mean, that's just something we look at, so that's why the question is there.
I understand your reason for asking, like I said, I just, I would have no place to store anything if I didn't have that shed.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody, okay.
I'd like to add a little bit. My family, I come from Green Manor, the subdivision here that extends from Park Farms down to Parkview Road, a neighborhood of 700 or so homes, and the Wilkins are very well beloved in this part of Green Manor for how generous they have been over the years, and these lots are small, they just, they were, they were built in 1956, so pre-zone, pre-zoning, and it does meet the 18,000 square foot requirement for an R-18 zone, but at the minimum, and it's only 100 feet wide, and it's a very well-kept property, and in the last 10, 15 years, we've had probably 50 to 100 homes go into foreclosure or were lost to reverse mortgages, so to see a property like this in our neighborhood with people that are capable of going elsewhere, it's, it'd be a shame to lose these people in our neighborhood. Every time I drive by on Parker Farms Road, I always have a little smile on my face when I go by.
Thank you. Has anybody got any questions? Mrs. Tata?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In regards to the letter that we received from the neighbor, you received a copy of that also?
We did.
Okay. Did, is there any, did you consult with any engineer or anybody about, his concern seems to be the water runoff?
I have not consulted with an engineer, but I can tell you from living there for 20 years, and I think Paul can speak to this as well, his property is actually slightly higher than mine, and the entire property, he claims it's flat, the entire property is on a slope, and every time we have a rainstorm, all the water runs from his yard into my yard, so I don't see how me putting more building there is, all this going to go to make the earth tip and the water flow his way. Plus, we had already spoken with our, he's not an engineer, but we spoke with our contractor, and right now around the garage, we have, the existing garage where this is coming off the back of, we have, all the downspouts come down into underground piping that runs around the garage and out and shoots out down our driveway, so the new, the new piece would have the same type of system with, I'm sorry, I don't understand it, but he says something about gravel and stone and leaching.
Curtain drain possibly?
Yeah.
Okay. So that, this will have?
That will have, yeah.
And where they're proposing to put this addition, prior to them, well, I guess it was there when you moved in, there was an in-ground pool there, and that is the flattest area, so the elevation at the rear of this property is the lowest elevation for all three properties around it.
Yeah, we did, we filled in this, let me pull about five years ago.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah. Anybody else got any further questions? Does anybody here speak in favor of this application? Yes, sir.
Good evening, my name is William McKnight, I live at 184 Parker Farms Road, M-C-K-N-I-G-H-T. Am I standing too close? Back up a little.
No, you're fine.
Okay. If you're looking at the applicant's address, we're directly, my wife and I are directly to the left, the next house over, we are absolutely in favor of this application, as far as neighbors go, I don't think we could ask for a better couple to be our neighbors, well-maintained lawn, so much to the fact that it makes mine look bad, but 100% in favor of the applicant, and to address the letter written by their neighbor at 190, I can attest that the elevation of his property is higher than theirs, so I'm kind of curious as to why he's saying that the water would run down and flood his property, because physics says it's impossible, if anybody drove by, you would see that it is elevated, so, again, 184 is in favor of the applicant. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
Is there anybody else to speak in favor of the application?
My name is Kristen Ranciato, I'm from 16 Askoli, which is not in the same area, but, Ranciato, R-A-N-C-I-A-T-O, and I'm just here to speak in favor of their addition, because if you have seen their property, it is so well-maintained, and they do, they do deserve to have the addition that they're asking for.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you. Is there anybody else here speak in favor of this application? Yes, sir.
Good evening, my name is Jason McManus, M-C-M-A-N-U-S. I am a Wallingford resident, a multiple property owner in the town, and I just solely stand behind specifically home renovation and home improvement, and if that involves raising property value in the town, then I solely support it, and as far as the significance of a small storage shed being on the property as well, I think we could all agree that we could y'all use a little bit, a little bit more garage space, and I don't see the problem with that being a portion of the variance.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jason.
Is there anybody else speak in favor of this application? Anybody speak against this application? Do you have anything further you want to add?
No, just thank you for your time.
Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing and open up for discussion and possible action by the board.
Mr. Chairman, I just have a quick question, from my understanding, I'm still allowed to ask the applicant questions?
Yes, we can.
Did you say that you are willing to remove the shed?
Oh, no, as far as talking to them, no.
Yeah, okay.
It's done.
Was it, okay.
It's just, we can have a little discussion between us.
Well, maybe I missed, maybe somebody on the board can correct me if I'm wrong, I think I did hear that they were willing to remove the shed to comply with the overall building coverage of 15%.
They needed to remove both sheds for that to happen, and they're only removing one.
Okay. Okay. Thank you for that clarification, Mr. Chairman.
No problem.
Mr. Chairman, in regards to Mr. Carmody's question, I don't know if we know if by removing one shed that that would remove the requirement for that variance, I'm not sure what the percentage is, I don't think we have the square feet of the, the square footage of the sheds here.
I don't have my measurements here either, but I did calculate them with the scale. It would require moving two sheds, the shed in the rear which they are proposing to keep is what puts them over on the coverage, you know, it's enough square footage, enough area, that there's too much building covering lot size, and as was mentioned, that lot is of the size and area that is required in an R-18 zone.
Can I make, now that we're at the public? So just, once again, for my clarification from staff, that both sheds would need to be removed for this to comply with the overall building coverage for the lot?
That's correct, it was just a suggestion that an alternative occurs, or exists, rather, to be fully compliant and not require-
Could, could we read back minutes then? Could we read back the minutes as to what the applicant said about the removal of the shed?
Yeah, I'm sorry, could you clarify that, Mr. Carmody, what we're seeking?
I'm just confused, excuse me, I'm just confused, and I may have not heard properly what the applicant said about the removal of the shed.
The applicant, from my understanding, and certainly our recording secretary can give the verbatim much better than I can, that the smaller shed, that they have already addressed as being removed with this project, was a planting shed or something to this effect, and then the larger shed stores equipment and whatnot they're using for storage, and the rear was not proposed to be removed. What the office was saying by suggesting this is if alternative exists to comply, we would like to comply as opposed to seeking variance to not have to comply, and so that was just a suggestion as one way where that would not be necessary. It makes the difference in the building coverage if both were to be proposed to be removed.
All right, so thank you, and I apologize for my confusion, I just wanted to make sure I was clear that if the applicant had said that they were willing to move the sheds to comply with the coverage, I just wanted to be clear on that, but, thank you. And, Mr. Chairman, I do have another question, I apologize.
Go ahead.
In terms of the side yard variance, this applicant had received a 2005 variance for 2.3, 3 feet per side yard variance, correct?
Correct.
And they are seeking a side yard variance that already falls within that?
Well, they're seeking a variance, by regulation, they need 20 feet, so they're seeking a variance for 11.8 feet. By regulation, they need 20 feet. By regulation, they need 20 feet.
But, 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 so the, but, yeah, but that was for the garage. Already exists.
But that's for the garage. So they're gonna add on in the back. So add on in the back, you're gonna need another variance because it's different part of the footprint.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, if I may, perhaps I can offer some clarification. The variances that were granted are pertinent to that project only. So the variances that they were granted, and it doesn't matter at this point whether they're a few inches off because there was no survey required, but that was granted for that garage addition. Now that they want to do more, they have to make their new addition comply. And, and in this case, their new proposed addition is 11.82 feet off the property line.
All right, okay. Thank you for that clarification. So that new project, however, will not be any closer than that previous project. It'll be actually further from what buildings were being assessed.
That is correct.
Okay.
And move eight and a half feet and further would also comply.
But I just want to make it clear.
But that's the difference. And nobody's talking, nobody's certainly holding against 18 inches versus 2.4. They were granted that, they were approved for that, but now they must seek more to ask for this project.
But I just want to make clear that curtain, an existing piece of building that's on this property is closer to the side yard than what they're proposing now.
That's, that is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Mrs. Tata.
Thank you. Um, it seems, it seems as if staff is saying, and I think Mr. Carmody kind of clarified this for me, that if the addition were able to be moved eight, approximately eight feet in from the side, and if the sheds were to be removed, that there would be no variances required. Correct?
That's correct.
And I don't, I mean, I know at this point, it's, it's too late to ask them if that's a possibility. Um, but I think those would be two, two solutions that could possibly avoid any variances needing to be required. Um, so I don't know if they want to try to rework that, if we could table it for another month. That's just an idea. I don't know how everyone else feels, but just a suggestion that if those were possibilities, and, and I'm sorry, I didn't think to ask that sooner, um, but just a possibility to see what everyone else thinks. Thank you.
Mr. Rice.
Um, Amy, if we were to table this so that they can look at this again and comply, or if we denied this, if we denied this application, can they come back with another plan?
If you deny this application, they certainly have the right to reapply, especially with a different application. Number one. Um, number two, if they were to find an alternative, if it were denied, for example, and they were to find an alternative that didn't require variances, they wouldn't need to come in front of you again. So I think you need to take action on this application. Um, and where we go from here could be a different number of routes, um, but that is your, the board's decision, so.
All right.
I'll express my opinion and how I will vote. Um, I think that there is a building alongside the property line that already exists, which is closer than what they're proposing. And I think what, all we're debating here is a 1% change in coverage on this piece of property. Um, and it sounded to me the applicant was willing to make some adjustments to, to, to rectify that. Maybe it won't be perfectly, uh, at the percentage that we have required in our, our, um, zoning regulations, but I don't think this application's unreasonable and I will be supporting it.
Anybody want to make motion?
Mr. Chairman, I think, I am going to, uh, make a motion to deny the sideline, uh, variance.
Uh, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, we have two, we have the sideline and we have coverage.
Right, we're gonna, we're gonna be separate.
Separately.
Yep.
Uh, Mr. Rice, can you re, uh, rephrase your motion? If you said, if you said the motion already?
Sideline.
He said sideline.
To deny the sideline.
Denied sideline?
Second. Okay, so this mo, this is a motion to deny this, we're doing two, this is the one to deny the side yard variance. Mr. Carmody?
No to deny.
Mr. Wolfher?
Yes to deny.
Ms. Tada?
No.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Chiruzek?
Yes to deny. The sideline variance have been denied.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that the, uh, coverage, uh, I'd deny the coverage also.
Second.
Motion to deny the, uh, building coverage. Uh, Mr. Carmody?
No.
Mr. Wolfher?
Yes to deny.
Ms. Tada?
No.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
And Chiruzek?
Yes to deny. Both, uh, variances have been denied.
Thank you for your time.
Next up is, um, 19 dash 013, special exception request from Brunsky, Smart Start Preschool to add seasonal day camp program to existing preschool program at 56 Gaylord Farm Road.
Excuse me, Chairman, it was like, they, they, the, the motion did not carry to deny. Uh, we, we need a super majority. You had two noes. So, uh, if the applicant can, I'm sorry, can return?
We need what?
You had, you need a super majority. You had two votes no and three in the affirmative. So the, I would make additional motions to approve it then and see where that, and then that will be denied if they approve.
But second, the, the coverage, because we hit was three to two, that one?
It did not, the motion to deny did not carry. What you need to make is an affirmative motion, and that may not carry either, and then that is, that will in essence be a denial. But these, these folks were not, did not have a motion to deny carried.
Okay. I apologize for that. We're gonna need a, two motions for, make a motion to approve. We're gonna do another vote.
Uh, just for my clarification, if there is no motion made, what, what occurs?
You're making a motion in the affirmative.
If there's no?
And then it doesn't carry, then it is denied because it didn't carry. But we can't make a motion to deny.
My, my question is if no motion is made, going forward now, what occurs?
Nothing. It wasn't approved either, doesn't, it can't get approved by a, a denial of a denial. That's what I, that's what I think.
We just need to make two motions to approve.
You need to make the motions in the affirmative, correct?
Make two motions to approve and then we'll vote.
Could, could I just ask a question? Did one get, one denial come fully through?
For this board to approve an application needs a super majority, four out of five voting members. So therefore, we did not have enough to carry a mo, motion to deny it. So basically, nothing happened.
On one or both?
On both of the, on both of them. So we just need to make it in the affirmative. If the affirmative does not carry, then it would be denied. But it, it's, it's, nothing has happened in essence. And so I'd hate to have you leave and, and not have an accurate.
Just make two motions. Okay, we'll, we'll make two motions to, uh, approve the application and then vote.
Okay, I make a motion to, uh, approve the sideline variance.
Second.
Okay, motion to approve the, uh, side yard variance. Mr. Carmody?
Yes.
Mr. Wolfher?
Yes to approve.
Ms. Tada?
Yes.
Mr. Rice?
No.
Chiruzek?
No. Motion failed.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion.
Excuse, can, can you read back what the vote total was?
Three, two.
Three, two.
Yeah, Carmody, yes. Wolfher, yes. Tada, yes. Rice, no. Chiruzek, no.
So the motion to approve passed, correct?
No, failed.
No.
You need four votes.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Make the motion to approve the coverage.
Second.
Okay, motion to approve the coverage. Mr. Carmody?
Yes.
Mr. Wolfher?
Yes.
Ms. Tada?
Yes.
Mr. Rice? No. Chiruzek?
No. Motion failed.
Yeah.
Excuse me, I object. We weren't told at the beginning of this meeting that we needed to have a super majority, that, that, that there were two members missing.
There's not two members missing.
There's no members missing.
There's no members missing.
That's always a.
Isn't there seven?
No.
That's normally on this?
Five voting members, and to carry any motion, you, it requires, uh, four affirmative votes. So unfortunately, when they didn't carry a denial vote, that doesn't mean that you are approved by default. That's why we needed to make the added motions in the affirmative, so.
So are we, are we done?
So the, both motions were denied.
Okay.
Next application, 19 dash 013, special exception request from Brunsky, Smart Start Preschool to add seasonal day camp program to existing preschool program at 56 Gaylord Farm Road. Madam Secretary, do we have any correspondence?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. First, we have staff comments. Applicant seeks increase in enrollment from 27 to 80 to allow the addition of a 10-week summer day camp component with maximum seasonal enrollment of 53 children to existing daycare center on the grounds of 56 Gaylord Farm Road in an RU40 district. Applicant has secured use of site for this purpose as well as staff parking facilities and accommodations for one-way traffic flow to allow safe and effective drop-off pickup for campers. And we also have correspondence dated April 11th, 2019, from the Smart Start Preschool and Learning Center Administration, and that consists of, uh, some letters and photos. And that's all. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Good evening. Please pull the microphones close to you and state your name and address for the record.
Uh, Alyssa Brunsky, uh, at 714 Orange Center Road in Orange, Connecticut. A L Y S S A, then B R U N S K I. I, I'm the summer camp director for the camp, and then I'm also preschool teacher for the daycare during the school year.
Okay, could you explain your application, please?
Oh, you don't want to, you don't want me to introduce myself?
Pull the, pull the microphone close to you and, and we need your name and address for the record.
Um, my name's Natasha Mendez, and I'm the owner of the Smart Start Preschool Learning Center, um, of, at 56 Gaylord Farm Road, um, and we're right on Gaylord's campus.
Okay, could you please explain your application?
Um, we're really just looking to, um, get approval to have our summer camp program there. Um, last year, we got like a variance, I think it was called, um, because we didn't have as many children. Um, so this year, we're taking the appropriate steps to get the correct approval.
Okay, so you have how many children now?
Um, our building currently that we use, that we rent from Gaylord, um, is licensed for 27 children. Um, we currently have 20 in the building. Um, that's, that's the state. I don't know how much we're licensed for, for the town. I think it's slightly more than that.
Okay, so you're going from, you just say you have 20 now and you're gonna go to, um, how many?
I think that they said 80, but we're not, we're not there. It's, it's just we're trying to give ourselves the capacity to be able to have that many kids, but right now, we'll probably only have another 20.
Okay, so you're looking at 40?
For the summer, yeah.
And, um, hours of operation?
Eight to 4:30.
Eight to 4:30. And then I, also is the traffic. Um, I see you're gonna have one-way traffic. It's gonna come in off of Gaylord Farm Road, then through Gaylord and back out again?
Right.
And that's all within, Gaylord's all okay with that?
Right. We have a letter from them stating that that's fine.
And do you need to get special, um, further licensing from the state?
Um, yes, we get that every year.
So this is the first step and then?
We actually already have our license, um, because they, the, those two don't go hand in hand. It's not like daycare where we have to get a town approval first and then the state license.
Yeah.
It, summer camp runs differently. Um, so we have our license already.
Okay, so you have a license for how many? Did you get a license for?
Yeah, uh, I don't, I don't, the, I don't know that we have.
Youth camp licensing doesn't.
Doesn't have a capacity.
Doesn't have a.
Has a capacity.
So you're, you just get a license to operate your, uh, establishment, like your camp. Um, they don't ever put a cap on it.
Okay. Oh, very good. Has anybody got any questions? Mrs. Tata?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just had a question about the, the numbers. So you're asking for 80, but it looks like 27 of those would be at the inside learning center. That's what you typically have now.
Right.
And then you'd have potentially 53 at the camp.
Right, right. So last year, we had, uh, upwards of, I think it was between 20 and 25 campers. Uh, they didn't come on, not every single kid came on every single day. Um, and I believe the capacity given to us by the town for that ground specifically was somewhere between 36 and 38 maybe.
For the, for the building, not the grounds.
Right, right, for the building. So we didn't, um, we were given a special exemption because we only.
We didn't have that many in the daycare.
Right. We didn't have that many in the daycare, kind of offset. So, uh, we were given a special exemption so that we could run the camp, um, but we had a really good turnout and we had a lot of positive feedback. So we wanted to take the right step to like, make a more concrete plan for this year to allow us the space to enroll more campers if needed. Um, so we, we weren't like capped out at say 20 campers. We could increase it there if we had the interest to like 30, 35 kids, um, you know, going forward.
Okay. So the, the 27, those, they're year-round basically?
Yes.
Okay, so this, the additional children would just be for, for the camp?
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Parisi?
Uh, I, I just want to know where exactly is the building?
So we're in the Lerat House, which is the farthest building on the campus. Um, we're literally like across the street from the softball fields. And we use the, the summer camp uses the field that's directly across from us, next to the Turig House, if you're familiar with anything on Gaylord's property. They got lots of weird names for their buildings. Um, but we use that field plus the tennis courts. Um, and then sometimes we use our backyard that is part of our daycare.
You're kind of in back.
Sorry.
On the edge of the property.
Yes.
By the water, just in the area of the water tower.
Yes, the water tower's directly behind the daycare building.
There was a daycare there.
Right, the YMCA was there before us.
Okay. Thank you.
I, I have another question, if I may, before, if anybody else. Um, I see you're gonna use the field next to the, uh, well, in front of the tennis courts, we'll call it. Is that fenced in?
It's not. No.
And the reason why I ask is by just looking at this, I mean, Gaylord Farm Road can be a busy road.
Mm-hmm.
And how many counselors are you gonna have and what, what are you gonna be doing out there just for concern of the children?
Uh, you know, it's a valid concern. My husband actually had the same concern last year because my children both attend there and I have runners, um, but none of them ever made it even remotely close to the road. Um, we, that field's actually fairly far away from the road, um, because we use the top portion, which is, it's still a significant, uh, amount of way, away from the road. Um, but we, um, they usually will just play some games on there. They do use the tennis courts a lot, which is fenced in, and we have access to that. Gaylord gives us keys. We are able to use that fenced-in area. Um, sometimes they'll actually go for walks through the property, which is, like, you know, if you've been to Gaylord, it's pretty huge. Um, so they're able to walk around and use that. Um, the side of the tennis courts, which is like next to our parking lot, is where we set up our picnic tables for them to eat. So, um, I mean, at this point, we've never, we didn't have any issues last year. The state approved us, knowing that there's no fence there. Um, the camp counselor ratio to campers is one to nine. Uh, so for every one counselor, there's nine children. Um, and we were always significantly overstaffed with one to two extra counselors, uh, specifically for purposes of containing the kids, um, so that, you know, there wasn't any safety issues. Uh, the parts of the field that we typically use.
Uh, the parts of the field that we typically used last year was a really small space, uh, probably about 30 to 50 feet, uh, in length, which is about 50 to 100 feet off of the road, so.
Okay, I, I just wanted to ask, just to see, you know, and I see you seem to have a plan. Um, okay, back to, anybody have any questions? Is there anybody here to speak in favor of this application? Anybody here to speak against the application? Does anybody on the board have any questions before I close the public hearing? Do you have anything further you want to add?
No, thank you.
Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing and open up for discussion and possible action by the board.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve special exception number 19-013.
Second.
Motion to approve, Mr. Carmody?
Yes.
Mr. Wolfher?
Yes to approve.
Ms. Tada?
Yes.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Chair Uzick?
Yes. Your application's been approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, can I get a motion to accept the minutes?
Move to approve the minutes for Monday, April 15th.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I'll abstain. I was not present.
Okay.
Thank you.
No problem. Um, I just want a little reminder, I don't know if everybody's still got this piece of paper, for the, uh, the training on June 6th, that's 6:30 in here. Okay, just a reminder. Um, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's it. Good.